Once it goes into account, it's controlled by the Community Foundation Board. And as we utilize, as we, as funds get accumulated into that account, a percentage of it is taken for administrative fees. So my concern there was the fact that we were going to have fees charged for the money that we were fundraising, and do we ultimately have control of those funds if we need them for the showboat? So that was the first option that we discussed. The next option we talked about was possibly just designating the funds into a bank account, which that's a viable option. The only issue with that is obviously there's only, within a bank account, there'd be designated people who could have access to those funds. And obviously, there's pros to that, but there's also cons to that as well because of the fact that, well, maybe that person's not here anymore. Maybe that person's away, and we don't have access to the funds, and we need to get to the funds. We looked at those different possibilities. We also had the discussion, my experience has been where you would just designate a fund in the city, where those funds would be specific to the showboat, and they could only be used for the showboat. I've done that in the past. However, there was obviously concern that, well, if we do that, does that mean that the, that the funds, that the City Council, if they so choose, could they take that money and utilize it towards something else? Well, there's a couple of different ways to look at that. So technically, if there was no, if there was no regulation, then I guess, yes, they could. You could have council approve a resolution to designate that fund and be used specifically for the needs of the showboat, whether it's the repurposing, the architectural engineering costs, future maintenance costs, once we've restored the showboat, that could be an option. The only issue with the resolution is, the council today could approve a resolution, a council down the road can vote to eliminate that resolution. So technically, that issue still could come up. We did talk, and one of the solutions we did talk about was establishing an ordinance for this. What that would do is if we did designate an ordinance for the showboat, where we would designate funds specifically through that ordinance, one, it would allow us, it would ensure that the only way the ordinance could be eliminated is obviously if the council changed it. But the difference with that is if the council did vote to change the ordinance, they couldn't, it would fall subject to public referendum, which would then mean that people could weigh in and have a public referendum to eliminate that from happening. What we would also want to do is if we did establish that ordinance, we would want to designate a formalized committee that the City Council appoints for the showboat. And they would be responsible for what currently is being done with the showboat. They're working towards repurposing it. One of the things they would also be looking at for the future is maintenance. One of the things that I know that the committee is stressed, and I've worked with committees to stress is the fact that whatever we do for the future of that showboat, we need to have a plan in place, and we have to have funds designated to maintain it as time evolves because obviously it's going to, whatever we do, it's going to be nice in the beginning, but if we don't maintain it, we're going to have, we're going to have issues in the future. So it's something that I think we need to address going forward. So we talked about those different options, and the committee was actually interested in the possibility of an ordinance. And I guess that's why I'm here to talk to the council about tonight, is whether or not they would consider that option, and if there was any concerns with that going forward.
Yes. I would be very much in favor of there being an ordinance, that the funds be within the city accounts, and that we, in the end, it's the city's piece of property. And so that makes sense to me. So, and we provide maintenance funds for going forward.
It's the best way to protect it, I think, because you wouldn't be able to just change it with a motion.
And as you suggested, having a committee.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, makes sense. You're right about, I mean, it's always lovely to throw a hunk of money into the community funds because they draw wonderful interest, but you lose control. And so in some cases, it makes sense. In this case, not so much.
I agree. Come back with a draft ordinance.
And the goals and objectives report from our council session?
Yes. On January 20th and 21st, the City Council met with Dr. Lou Bender to discuss our goals and objectives for working together along with our goals and objectives for moving the city forward. In front of you is both pages of the workshop summary from Saturday morning. And basically, I just kind of wanted to go over it with the council again, to see if they had any concerns with what was suggested. Obviously, we did a, we did the SWOT analysis, and we discussed the, obviously, the internal strengths and the internal weaknesses, and then our external opportunities, external threats. And those are, I think, we had a really good discussion about that. I think we spent a couple of hours just in the morning session that day, just talking about those issues. And then when we were done with that, we started discussing our one-year plan going forward. And I think we're going to be looking, I know, going forward, a number of these items we're looking at already, just to be putting in the budget for this year. But I wanted to, I just wanted to talk to the council, see what they thought were on the session, if there's anything that was presented by Lou, whether or not we should make any modifications to it. And like, one of the things that we obviously talked about is, these are one-year plans, obviously with the change in leadership and everything. When we met with Lou, we talked about addressing this in a one-year, and then obviously after about this time next year, we would be, we would be evaluating, meeting with Lou and trying to reschedule, and start doing a longer-term facilitation and strategic visiting for the community. I think these, I think these goals and objectives, I think, are pretty attainable here in the year, in the year time being. And maybe I should read them out for the public since they don't have, they didn't have access to the second sheet of paper that I provided you. The council, in our committees, when we broke up, we discussed basically four goals for the city to focus on this upcoming year. The first goal was promoting and marketing, start developing a marketing plan. This would include creating a new website, improving our communication via informational technology, working towards marketing Lowell, providing more opportunities for student involvement, focusing on our alliances, and also working, having Light and Power, the council and others meet. We're also going to be looking at reviewing our intergovernmental contracts, and educating the public on what a destination city is. That would be done through our master plan update. We've also discussed the idea of branding, mainly the showboat trails, expanding the fiber in the community, our park system, and creating a plan, a community-wide branding plan, not just the city. We would reach out to our different players involved and throughout the community to try and develop a plan to future brand the community. The second goal would be to improve our sustainability. One of the goals that they wanted to see was cooperating with the Township for Revenue and Marketing, and also expanding and increasing our intergovernmental cooperation. The third goal would be to finalize a plan for the downtown and the Riverwalk. This would include a Riverwalk plan, a rental rehab program that we currently have, continue to evaluate that. Working towards filling vacant store funds, continue our focus on placemaking, improving the downtown facade, and developing a plan for second and third story building development. Our fourth goal was livability, continue to be a livable community. Basically utilizing potential, evaluating our potential to expand fiber into the community. And also, we wanted to review our rules and policy review to make sure that we're consistently enforcing our code enforcement guidelines throughout the city. Those were the, those were the things that we discussed, that I know the council and everyone, and department heads who were at the meeting, and also Chairman of Light and Power, he was there as well, Perry Beecham. And I thought it was a very, I thought it was a very, I thought these goals were pretty attainable, I think, in a one-year period, and it's something that we're going to continue to follow up on throughout the year. Something, as we're working on the budget, once we're done with the budget, obviously, we're going to be focusing more internally about a lot of these goals, and I think we already have on a number of them. And we're going to also continue to review these. So I thought the plan that was discussed by everyone at the meetings was good, but I just wanted everyone else's thoughts, to see if there was anything else they wanted to look at. Oh, one other thing we did talk about, we talked more about this at the Friday session that wasn't at this session, is we would look at possibly creating what would be called a committee of the whole of the council. So basically, what that would entail is, on the night the City Council meets, say tonight, at 5:30, and we would do this for one of the meetings a month. At 5:30, we would have a committee of the whole council meeting, where the council would meet, and they would discuss policy, policy items throughout, that they wanted to focus on. And all we would do is discuss it, and we wouldn't take any vote, we wouldn't take any action. It would be more of a consensus building, and trying to get information gathering type of session. And we would do that once a month. Felt that it might be better to do it on a night we're already meeting, because it's something that we would, you know, trying to add additional meeting when we already had a lot of meetings that we were attending already. So something that we, something that we discussed on Friday night, that we thought we might want to continue to look at, so, I mean, I'm willing to have that conversation with council if it's something we're willing to do. I can already think of going forward, a number of monthly sessions where I would just like to devote to one topic, just at a work meeting, like for example, look at our intergovernmental contracts pertaining air, water, and sewer, future economic development opportunities, just things of that nature. There's a number of things that we can, we can just devote one session every month, just to one of those items.
If that might help, and Mike's referring to this as a committee of the whole. This does basically what we used to call work sessions, and we would spend time doing that. So it's a similar exercise, a similar information gathering, similar thought exchange that we can't do in private, we can only do in public. And so that gives us a forum and a way to get that information, and to share different ideas that the various council members have, where we can actually do it. And do it well, do it legally, do it right. So that would be the committee of the whole that Mike's speaking to.
I'm just looking for any feedback from the council.
I mean, I think, we used to have the council training schedule, it had all the topics on it that we were going to meet on after the meeting, but it never quite filled up. I'd like to see the committee of the whole schedule type of thing, for dedicating, you know, to individual topics, that would give everybody a chance to prepare, you know, and if people want to attend, they know which ones they're attending.
Maybe if the council would like, I could come back with maybe a calendar for a year out of those issues.
I agree, I love that. I think the 5:30 before, and either do it at the first or the second one, and just establish that routine, and, okay, I'm all for it.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Boarding commission reports. Jeffrey?
I don't have anything new because I haven't met yet, the 28th, Tuesday, 6:00 PM downstairs.
Mr. Hodges?
Oh, sure. Our board meeting was canceled this month. The LCTV Endowment Board will meet on Wednesday, March 1st, to go over the various proposals. So we've just gotten those of the individual members of that endowment board, so we're looking them over pretty thick. Lots of, lots of good activity being planned for our community, so we need to decide where those monies are going to go. Our first discussion again, Wednesday, March 1st, 7:00 PM. Wolf area fire and emergency services authority, met Monday, February the 13th, discussed a number of items, including UTV status, current, future, and grant status, progress on fire station repairs, building's old, it needs a few fixes, more than a few. 2017-18 preliminary budget discussion, review of possible changes for inspections, that fire inspections that would be done, and how municipalities were charged for that. There was also an interesting conversation about concealed firearms carry for firefighters. It's in the discussion phase. Vehicle asset sales and replacement of vehicle status, and potential purchasing conflicts of interest, not that those would ever happen, but we do want to prevent those. Other items, we had a very interesting presentation on 1-800 Board Up, and that is a company that would board up burnt businesses, homes, buildings, and help the victims through that process of, if you've got your prescriptions in the house that you're not supposed to enter, and how usable they are, as well as other important papers and things. It's a great assistance, so the fire department is looking into how that might happen. And also, they're going to be going through some firefighter physical training, so that they're updated as far as their health, that all our firefighters are qualified and capable of doing the work that is expected. And finally, there's a state of the department presentation that will be made here in the council chambers on March 30th at 7:00 PM, and encourage all citizens and board members and people to learn a bit more about our fire department. So it was a very healthy meeting, and lots of discussion, lots of opinions were shared, and we look forward. The next meeting will be on March 13th. And that's all I have there.
Mr. Camp?
Parks and Recs Board met tonight. Robert Rogers' group had raised $14,000, and they did receive a $28,000 grant to purchase the playground equipment, with the understanding they need to raise another $14,000 so that it's a 50-50 match. So they're looking to install that equipment in June. They've got about 90 days to raise that additional $14,000, $15,000. So they're going to be out pounding on doors, looking for contributions from anyone that has extra funds laying around. That would be a great cause. The mayor and I attended the elective officials academy in Frankenmuth on the 17th and 18th last week. That was very informative. Michigan Municipal League put that on. A lot of good information was shared there, very educational. What was also very interesting was in talking with other attendees from other similar communities, and made me realize how lucky we are here in Lowell with what we have going, because all these people are talking about their buildings are falling down, and stuff's in foreclosure, and people are buying buildings for a dollar at the tax sale, nobody wants anything, and they don't know what to do with these buildings. And they look at Lowell, and we're a thriving, bustling community that, you know, everything's coming our way. We're really about to blossom here, and it really gave me a great appreciation for what we have going. Seventy percent of citizens, one of their largest concerns is walkability, and that's something that we really thrive on here. We've got a great community, kind of centrally located, a lot of our great features, so it was a great learning experience, and thank you, Mike, for hooking us up with that.
I attended the showboat meeting, and the application to put the boat in the water on pylons has been updated and submitted, and working on soil boring evaluations and endangered species evaluations, we have to deal with that. Might need to have the structure built above the flood plain, which is five feet above the water level as it stands now. That's, may cause a problem as far as how you can make that boat, that new structure look like a boat, but they're working on that, and they'll figure it out. Rotary has offered to start the funding, and that's about it. Mike talked about redundancy, and maybe creating this new commission board, and that's the cool thing. Light and Power had a meeting, they hired labor attorney Stephen Schultz to help with labor negotiations for the new contract. A cost of service study was approved to be set for this year, this fall, I think it starts. We've had, at Light and Power, six months in a row of 99.9% uptime. I think that it goes probably farther back than that, we're just so dependable over there. I just want to thank Perry Beecham, he has some really good thinking, preemptive thinking on educating, and maybe creating a board to show possible issues to local businesses on power outages. Maybe the fact that Meyer owns their own transformers, and if their transformers blow, they can't come to Lowell Light and Power, because Light and Power doesn't own that transformer, and they're not responsible for it, Meyer is. So we just need to educate these companies to know what, who's responsible for what. They're looking at purchasing a gas compressor to allow the running of boat turbines, more information will be presented at next month's meeting. New tablets for the board members will be available next month, and the new website is coming along. Midstate Security is upgrading their security system over there, evidently it's been failing or doesn't work at all, and they'll be discussing a strategic plan next month. At the lower meeting, the mayor from Belding attended, and it's a very interesting discussion. He plays a big part in the trails that run from, pretty much around Foreman, north to Belding, and then to Greenville. And they're submitting grants, grant funds applications to try to get that finalized. If we can get that finalized, the only missing piece of the puzzle will be this little thing from Foreman to the rail that runs to Saranac. And so once those two pieces are done, there's a hole right where Lowell is, and we're thinking that we're going to get funded, because this is the final piece of the puzzle, and that would be good. Michigan Municipal League, according to the mayor of Belding, will offer insurance for trails within the city limits, so that's something to talk about, and maybe he'd be a good resource for that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I did attend the conference on Friday and Saturday with Greg in Frankenmuth, and I was struck with quite a sense of pride, listening to what it sounds like some of the other councils go through with each other, maybe with some of their entities. I think we're pretty lucky here about how we all work together. And I thought it was very interesting to see where all the money comes from, our sources of revenue and what we're supposed to do with it. So thank you for setting that up. I brought the information back, Allen has it now, just looked through it, so it's going council-wide. That's all that I have. Monthly reports, any discussion on that necessary?
Mr. Burns, your manager report?
Couple, couple items for note. Our upcoming meeting on March 6th, we're going to have two presentations. First presentation will be from Dustin Drebek, he's from the power group, they're our insurance provider. He recently did a analysis of our facilities and a number of things that we, number of our operational issues for the city, and he came, he's found a number of exposure issues, a number of unneeded exposures that he's going to talk to the council about, and something basically just to consider as we move forward. A number of things that I found, I was quite, I was quite shocked that we even had, and it was something that I felt that the council needed to be aware of as we move forward, because I'm sure you're not aware of a number of them. So he'll be here at the next meeting to discuss those things, and have any, and he'll also be able to answer any questions you might have. Also at that meeting, we were going to have it this evening, but we had to change the schedule, going to be a representative from Dickinson right here to discuss the medical marijuana law changes, and advise you of what those are. As I've stated in the past, they did change the law on December 20th that allowed for cities to have dispensaries, and, but a city actually has to approve that. And as of right now, us doing nothing, we've opted out. But this law is, there is a number of different details to this law that I think the council needs to be advised of and take into consideration, whatever policy decision the council may have on that. Also, I am working, as I've emailed all the council members, I'm working on getting the iPads order, just like Light and Power had. We're going to be issuing you iPads for your council packets, so we don't have to send you paper packets anymore. Last week, I attended, myself, Rich Lombard, Steve Dockers, Luke and Ryan Teachforth from Light and Power, we went to Seabewing to investigate and learn about their fiber internet system that they provide for residents in that area. It was a very interesting trip to Seabewing. We learned quite a bit on how to set up this type of operation if we were to do it. It's a very, it is, it is highly regulated, it's not something we can just go and do. And if the council, Light and Power boards see interest in this, we'll probably be having more discussion about this in the near future, as to what we can and cannot do regarding this. We're in the process right now of getting our budget ready for 2018, and I sent out an email to the council today, explaining the proposed calendar that I am, I'm working with staff on to get the budget presented to you. I probably will do budgeting, I will probably present the budget differently than we may have been done in the past. City charter requires that I have the budget presented to you on the 3rd, Monday in April, which I plan on doing. I know in the past, they've had a number of work sessions to discuss the budget. I like the, I'm used to, and have been more comfortable with just designating a single-day budget session, where we go through the line item, line item by line item for each department, and I was hoping to have that on May 6th, and...
March 6th?
No, May 6th.
May 6th?
Yes. Yes. May 6th, yep. Oh, yes. It'd be an all-day Saturday. It'd be on a, it'd be on a Saturday, beginning Saturday morning sometime, and hopefully we can get through it in a couple of hours, and then go through the processes to approve the budget. One other thing I'm working on, Sue Olent and I are working with Dick Went to finalize the installment purchasing for the Bobcat and the front-end loader, also for a compressor for Light and Power that they're looking to get. We're hoping that we can pull these items together, and get a lower interest rate for all the projects, for all of the purchases that we've just made. And that's all I have for this time.
Okay, thank you. Council comments, Mr. Phillips?
I gotta agree with Greg, this weekend, driving through the community was, it was awesome. Everybody was out and about, and I think just enjoying that, and I'm looking forward to summer, but also the opportunities that we have in this community, so I think it's going to be great, and we can really take advantage of them, and have a great week.
Thank you. Mr. Hodges?
Thursday night, the Chamber of Commerce has its annual winter gathering of the membership to honor various businesses within our community, and the nonprofit spotlight will be on the Impact Church, Brick Awards for doing solid work within our community, go to Embrook, Lighthouse, Green Acres, and Lowell Arts. The business to watch in the next year or two is Billie Weaver's most promising new business, New Union Brewery, Business Appreciation Award to Arrowhead Golf Course, and the Person of the Year, our school superintendent, Greg Pratt. Congratulations to Greg, he's a terrific man, and has led our community well, and we honor all of these, and it'll be quite, quite the gathering. I remind our citizens that coffee with council will be between here and our next meeting, March 4th, from 8:00 to 10:00 AM, at the Chamber of Commerce building. And then sadly, our community lost one of our, no, the best citizen that we've had, and darn long while, Jan Johnson, passed away, a great artist and wonderful lady within our community. She passed away yesterday, so our condolences to her sons, and I know that she's now with Phil, and a great lady. So, our condolences to her sons, and I know that she's now with Phil, and a great lady.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Camp.
Just like to say congratulations to Greg Pratt, very deserving of the Person of the Year award. The schools in Lowell are just fabulous, and the staff there, they do a great job. And the schools really established the value of a community and why people choose to locate here. So, thanks to Greg Pratt and his staff for the great job they do.
Yeah, it starts with the schools, and Lowell proves it. When I was looking through the SWOT analysis from the Lou Bender thing, I noticed that under the external threats, there's three items there, and one of them was the state of Michigan. I think our legislators need to know, they're considered a threat. Well, funding. And so, I don't know if you ever want to call the governor, tell him, tell him to start looking toward the cities. And I just want to, you know, Jan Johnson, my, my wife loved her dearly, and the call we got hurt, hurt her a lot. So, I want to say condolences to the family and friends.
Thank you. I don't have very much. Congratulations, obviously, to Mr. Pratt. I think he does a fantastic job up there. And I will tell you that the state of Michigan came up as a threat. When Greg and I were down in Frankenmuth this weekend, talking about where money comes from and why nobody has it anymore. So, people are catching on, I think. That's all I have. Mr. Hodges?
Yes, I'll blow the way you're on at 8:22. Support?
All in favor?
Yes.